We're going to move now to the next presenter, who is Dr. Janice Malo regarding accountability of our city officials. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Janice Malo. I reside at 3046 Fifth Street here in the city of Port Arthur. I am also the president of the Alliance of Concerned Citizens of Port Arthur. And we are here this evening because as a group and as citizens of Port Arthur, we just want to respectfully share that we are expecting more accountability from our elected officials. On November the fourteenth, we had a community forum here in our city. And we also had FEMA and Homeland officials here in our city. Cameron Quinn, the President's Appointed to the United States Department of Homeland Security as Officer for Civil Rights and Civil Liberties. Her office supports the department as it secures the nation while preserving individual liberty, fairness, and equality under the law. She was here in the city of Port Arthur to not only meet with the residents, but to meet with our city officials to find out if we were treated fairly during the Harvey hurricane. We also had Rebecca Tosada, Director of the Anti-Discrimination Group in the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Office for Civil Rights and Civil Liberties. Ms. Tosada received a Silver Medal for her perseverance in working with the agency to ensure resilience to disasters. We also had FEMA official Joe Linda Johnson of the Department of Office of Civil Rights, as well as FEMA Region Six representatives and local officials. We had anywhere from twelve to fifteen FEMA officials on site, and they were here to speak with our residents as well as our city officials. And we feel that our city council failed us in that area. And to your defense, Mayor Barti, you did share with me that you wouldn't be able to be here. You were going to be in Austin. But I personally contacted each council member and sent you an email of that flyer concerning the community forum so that you could share with your constituents on your social media platforms. This meeting was important because those individuals were here to speak with you. And they asked, where are your city officials? Where are your leaders? And no one was there. We are vulnerable to flooding. We are vulnerable to hurricanes. We just had a TPC fire, or explosion. And in case of a disaster, I know we have connections statewide. But to have connections in Washington, DC, those people were here, and they were wanting to meet with our city officials. So respectfully, we just want to share that we were not only disappointed, but we were embarrassed. Our newly chosen city manager, you did come through. Thank you, Mr. Burton. We appreciate that. But we just wanted to say that we are expecting more. We feel that accountability inspires confidence, as well as builds trust. And we want to trust our leaders that they're going to do what's in the best for the city of Port Arthur. So we just wanted to share that with you. And I know we have members of our group here. Some have left. But we are concerned about that.
Thank you, Dr. Malo. And I know I'm going to be called on council persons, but I would like to deviate from that and speak first. I apologize for myself and the council for your, and we don't want you to feel, or your group, to feel that we are unresponsive. On that day, I think I spoke with you personally prior to that date. Told you that I would not be available to be there on that date. On that day, I did speak with the city manager from Austin, and he did get there to speak with the individual. So I'm sorry that maybe some previous obligations had precluded the attendance of several of the council members. But just know, beyond a shadow of a doubt, and just know that we're here to serve the citizens. And by no means I believe that any one of us just ignored it and looked upon it as something that we just did not need to attend. So I don't want you to, you know, I don't want you to feel that. However, I can understand going through the planning and everything that you all did to be sure that you would have individuals here, and you would want some of your city fathers to be there. And I don't see any harm in that at all. I was just, I just wanted to say that before I would even let any of the others speak.
And if I may interject here, I just want to share with anyone that I didn't go out and try to make this happen. We just happened to be, you know, as the request was made that it be hosted at our church. So I shared with everyone that there was no political motivation. I'm not running for office. And, you know, I just, so I just wanted you to know that, you know, we didn't go out just to try to make this happen. It just, you know, we were called, and we responded. And we tried to make sure that everyone was informed.
Okay, Councilman Dusette.
Pastor Malo.
Yes, sir.
I hear that you schedule a meeting with people. And I understand the importance of it. There's no doubt. There's not a doubt in my mind it's important. You're naming a lot of people. Then you say that these people came down here to meet with citizens and us. Well, when someone is going to come down to meet with us, they need to check our schedules. Because I think it's very unfair for anybody to say that we're not being accountable because someone scheduled an event at their convenience that was maybe not convenient for the council. Now, I can't, I don't speak for others, but there are things I make, there are things I don't make. I have something right here that I will be doing this Saturday. Got something Tuesday, okay? Reading Proclamations, okay? We do things. But there are certain things people ask us of. We may have something already scheduled. But when someone schedules something and doesn't clear it through our schedule, then they should hold us accountable if we can't be there. And before they tell us that we're not accountable, they should at least ask us why weren't we there? Could it have some obligations that were previous? Could it have some family issues? So to say that we're unaccountable because someone plans an event at their convenience, invite people to meet with us, and don't see what we have on our calendars, I find it kind of odd to say that we're unaccountable. I really do. I feel offended because I try to make as many events as I can as a council member. But I have a family too. And not only that, but sometimes I can't make one because I'm attending another one. So I, for one, I attend events. And when I can't make one, for someone to say I'm not accountable, I just don't see it.
I understand your point, Mr. Dusette. And please know that I didn't schedule it. The date and the time came from Washington, DC, just like the flyer did. They were on their way to Houston for their quarterly Houston Community Forum. And they scheduled it. I do understand. And I did personally call you, sir, and share with you. And, I mean, I can understand if you had something, but you didn't call me or say anything to me, you know, concerning the fact that you wouldn't be able to be there. I know that Mr. Mayor Barti did let me know that he wouldn't be available for that meeting. So even to those officials, I was able to share with them to his defense that he would be out of town. And so it did. Whether you had another event or not, I'm sharing with you what the citizens are feeling. And so...
And what I'm sharing is the fact that we give time, and we be at events. And it's not like it's personal time. We do do that. We can't make them all. And when someone come and tell us we're unaccountable because we didn't make that event, I'm going to tell you, I am angry. Because it's unwarranted. I didn't make one, okay, so someone said to me, I'm unaccountable? And you say you didn't schedule it? You mean people from Washington, DC coming down here to Port Arthur, Texas to meet with us, and they don't notify us personally?
Well, she said she dropped the ball on that. But I personally made sure that you were informed.
Wait a minute. She scheduled it. She dropped the ball. Okay.
She sent the flyer out.
Well, I'll tell you what. We're not going to go round and round. I think you made your point. And I hope I made mine. Because like I said, I have two things on Saturday and another time. And I do make events. I go and attend events. But when I don't make one, and someone say I'm unaccountable, I say to that person, well, you take this seat and you make them all.
Okay, excuse me, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, thank you for your apologizing for the council. But I didn't think I needed one in my instance because Dr. Malo and I talked on several occasions about this forum. You called me, am I correct?
Yes.
You called me, and I called you. We kept missing each other. You called me, I called you. And I went by the church on two occasions to get a flyer that you told me to come by and get.
And you didn't have an email address for me to send it to?
Right, right, right. And I went by the church on two occasions. And the last time I went, you told me it was in Beaumont. And you told me to come by at two o'clock. And I stayed till about two thirty. You said you got caught up in traffic because something happened. You couldn't get there. You had to give me the flyer and talk to me about the forum. So I think I did my best. I want your members to know I showed up. And I stayed there thirty minutes. It was pouring down rain. Am I correct to get?
I don't know about thirty minutes, but you did show up.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
To get the flyer. And you had something else that tied you up. You couldn't make it. You couldn't be there because you had something, you got tied up in Beaumont. There was something different, something else you were doing in Beaumont. Am I correct about that?
Yes, and I think we missed each other when you came back. Or you were to come back, and you didn't.
Yes, I want your members to know I did show up on two occasions. And you and I did talk, and I tried to be there. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Moses?
Yes, thank you. This is Malo, Pastor Malo. I think when we talked about it, I think I text you because I thought the meeting was at night. And I had something during the day with my mother, an appointment I could not miss. And so I think I text you that on the fourteenth and said I was headed to the church.
That evening.
And that evening, and let you know that I thought the meeting was an evening meeting overlooking the time. But you and I talked about that. I knew I had a previous engagement with my mom because I'm her caretaker. And so I had explained that to you. When we talked the week before, on the fifth of November, when you told me that, asked me about the flyer, you emailed me the flyer. And I told you I think I have something on that day, but I'll let you know. But I, in my head, thinking that the appointment or that your meeting was in the evening time and not in the morning time. But my intent was to be there because I was en route. And then I pulled up the flyer and saw that it was that morning. So, and I did text you, and you said, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Malo, I think everybody up here could tell you a reason why they didn't make it. But my main thing, the thing that I'm concerned about is to say that, you know, that we need to have more accountability. Since Harvey had been going on, this council has worked diligently, even trying to set up a place across the street for citizens to fill out applications. My form has rained all the time. I talk to citizens over and over about Harvey. Questions I can, I find out, and I lead them to what direction they need to go. So it's been a lot of work done. But to judge this council not being accountability, having any accountability based on not making your event...
It wasn't mine. Yes, sir.
Well, it wasn't yours, but it was at your church and everything. So it wasn't yours, but you were there. If it wasn't yours, then you ought to not be coming here saying that, you know, we don't have any accountability. Because it's so much, it's so, it's so much work been done in this. And it's easy for citizens to be misled, okay, by people making statements about council members not working. Accountability, you know, visible, you know what I mean? Being available. That's, I've been up here all these years, and that's all I've always tried to be. You called me too. But I can sit up and tell you why I wouldn't have. But that's not the most important thing. The most important thing is that if you, if you had some questions that needed to be answered, or you want to know some things, then you could have gotten questions from council members. But it's just like I said, it's just that, it's just hard for me to really swallow because I've worked so hard with citizens. And I'm not the only one up here that worked hard. And we're so concerned about our citizens, and we've tried to do so much. And this one event, for you to come up here and say we're not accountable, it's like, it's really, it's really kind of mind-boggling to me too. Because any citizens in my district or even in Port Arthur that has called me since the time Harvey has been going on, I've been there. So if you, if you want to judge somebody, you can only judge somebody by according to their works. And if you don't know our works, you can't judge us according to one event that we did not make. Okay, so I just wanted to say that because, you know, a lot of times, things can get political, you know? And people do things for certain reasons. And I'm not going to say you doing it. But I'm just saying, those things exist. And it's just, it's just bad that citizens can be misled by people making statements. And you have people up here working so hard for the citizens. And I've been working very hard for the citizens. I'm going to continue working hard. And I don't think that that one event should measure my accountability up here for eight years on this city council, representing citizens, fighting for citizens, and listening to citizens.
I'm sorry. And Mr. Scott, thank you. And I understand, may I just interject for a moment? You are elected officials, and you represent the city of Port Arthur. And I'm doing what I do in the community. And I'm representing the voices of those who were at that forum and who wanted to see their officials there. So I think you're taking it as if I'm judging you, and I'm not. I'm a voice for those that I represent here in the community. At that forum, there were citizens there who felt that they weren't treated fairly, or they weren't really heard by FEMA. And those officials literally reopened their files and began to try to help these people. And so that were citizens there in the forum asking, where are our leaders? They should be here. And, and so I am representing the voice of the people.
I understand. Dr. Malo, we're not going to get into debate about it. Okay, because you're not the only one representing the people.
No, I know, I know.
So this whole situation is about, not about you representing the people. I mean, it's about you saying, okay, we need to be held accountable based on one, one, one thing, that event that you, that was handled by you, or you were aware, and you invited this conference. That's what I'm talking about. Now, if citizens, if citizens are disappointed, and I hate that citizens are disappointed. Because, you know, what I would do, if any citizen would talk to me now about it, I would discuss anything they want to discuss. And I would try to give them as much information as I can give them pertaining to Harvey. And if they were, if they've been let down, I, 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 I'm very sorry that they were let down. But I don't think that I let them down just by not being there. So the thing about it, like, I don't want to make this, I don't want to make this a debate. And I don't want to make this go round and round. I'm just saying, to be able to come up here and say that we, as council members, you know, are not obligated to citizens or, and based on that one event, I think is... And I just tried to share with you a lot of things I've done. And a lot of things I've continued doing, and I'm going to continue doing. And like I said, if those citizens are disappointed, I hope that I can talk to all of them again based on what was done, or what they missed, or what I can help them with. I hope so.
Okay.
And Mayor Barti, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Just hold on, hold on one second. Councilman Frank?
Thank you. Dr. Malo, I apologize because I should have called you. But in the, in the future, please, it's hard to have a forum at ten in the morning to noon in the afternoon. Especially for, because we, some of us have a job. But I'm always open. And I apologize. You know, it is, it's hurtful because Harvey was hard, and we did work hard. We all did. But it's, it's really hard, it's really hard to have a forum at ten in the morning. It is, I'm sorry. For, so future, please, if we're going to have a forum, let's just have it in the evening. Because we do have meetings. We do have, we're here, we gathered every other Tuesday, right here. Morning time and evening times. So we always here for you. So, and I apologize because I should have called you. I should have called you and told you that I could not be available that day because I do, I work.
And please understand, I did not set the time. If you go to your flyer, there is a name, Rebecca Tosada, that can be contacted. If any of you have any questions, any concerns about the forum, why they didn't contact you, her name is on the bottom of the flyer. She's the one who sent it to me from Washington, DC.
But can I say something? Thank you. But we're missing one point. We are a group of a body.
Yes.
They could have contacted us. We are a group of a body. So if I couldn't be there up here, my fellow neighbor could have been there. But what I'm saying is, we are a body. So if they were, if this people, these people in Washington, DC really wanted us, we have a secretary, we have their staff here. There's a lot of things we could have made it happen, Janice. I mean, it just, but, but, you keep saying it's, it wasn't yours, though.
It wasn't mine.
But they contacted you. But we are here as a body. We always are as a body. So, and once again, I just, it's kind of just strange that they wouldn't contact the city. It's just different. I mean, and we've been through so many Harvies. We've been so many forums. We've been through them all. But it's just strange that the people did not contact the city secretary, city. I mean, it's just strange to me.
Please, let me bring a little more clarity. They actually contacted Reverend Vaughn of Mount Sinai Missionary Baptist Church. They were familiar with him because they worked with him with his nonprofit organization. And they wanted to come through here because they were going to Houston to have their community meeting. And they realized that they had never come here to Port Arthur to speak with the residents, to find out if they were treated fairly. And that's, that's how I got it. So I just want you to know, but there is a point...
But you know Pastor Vaughn don't represent us, though. We're still a body.
Well...
We're still a body.
Whatever concerns you have with that, you have a point of contact on that flyer. And you can contact the individual who sent it to me and ask why you weren't as a body contacted.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's huge. That's huge.
That is huge. And that was, you know, and because of the weightiness of the officials that were here, that's why, you know, I mean, the, those who were here, you know, those who were appointed to Homeland Security.
Because there could have been either besides city council. It could have, we could have all went, their county commissioners. There's a whole lot of people that could have been there. But once again, it wasn't, they contacted you or Pastor Vaughn instead of contacting the body. That's all I'm saying. Thank you, though. I appreciate you.
I tried to do what I could to make sure everyone got the information.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Moses?
Yeah, and we're going to really stop beating this dead horse. But I have to say that there, if you're their representative, you're here coming before council to us. And they're not here standing here. Rebecca is not here. So you're coming to me and Rebecca's place. And, and, well, in our stance and the accountability of city council and her place, because you're saying contact her, not you. But you're standing here with us. So I think that's why we're, it seems like you're, you know, you're helping her, her voice, or whomever she is, who should have contacted the whole city staff to let us know. But I'm done with it. Basically, it's over.
And I'm sorry about...
Are you all getting ready to speak on this? Okay, I'm going to call you all up. No, 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 no. We aren't going to have this. Now, this is just, no, ma'am, hold up, stop. Ma'am, would you all get a seat? That's disrespectful. We're not, I'm not going to chair a meeting. And so if you're tired of being in it, that, how you feel, I'm going to let you speak as long. And I'm not going to let anybody come up and do that to you. We just said something about the coral. We're not going to do that. We are not going to do that ever again, as long as I'm there. Thank you. Now, can we repeat what you were saying?
I'm sorry. So as I was saying, I'm here representing the Alliance of Concerned Citizens of Port Arthur. But when the question was asked, why didn't they contact, you know, you all? I don't, I don't know why. That point of contact is on the flyer. That's all I said. You know, that's all I'm indicating. If you want further information, or if they're coming back, or when they're coming back, then there is a point of contact on that flyer if you need more information. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, now, I think, what, the city attorney? At your light on you, okay? Excuse me, one more. Councilman Jones?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Dr. Malo, let me say this here. I think Reverend Scott, Councilman Scott had a good point. He said we shouldn't let one incident, you know, judge the whole as a council because we missed your forum. And what I mean by that is each department head in this city, every department head in this city, I'm not toot my own horn, but they could tell you, Councilman Carol Jones, where I'm out about problem in this city. I think I give the city a hundred and ten percent of my efforts, really. I'm busy all the time, almost twenty-four seven. And talking about politics, I ran on accountability, independability, invisibility. And I think I do that for this city. I give it my best. So I apologize I missed your forum. But I think one incident shouldn't describe us as not being accountable. And that's just hurting things. As Councilman Scott says, since Hurricane Harvey, we work hard. It's complimented a whole lot. When Harvey came with flood waters and the trash, garbage, now the streets repair, dangerous structures, FEMA problem. We had a lot, it's complimented a whole lot. I think you know that. A whole lot. And that's very haunting that we had to come tonight with this accountability issue, you know, in front of the people and your, and your group, you know, and the city. We work hard. I know I work hard.
You do work hard. Please hear me well.
Yeah, I work hard.
We're not challenging your service or questioning your service. The concern was that the council or someone had the opportunity to get a card from someone in Washington, DC so that if there was a disaster here, that you would not only have state contact, but... state contact, but even contact in Washington. And I think the people was concerned because of the level of authority and the level of the positions that you had here in the city. And that's, that's all it is. It's not questioning your service.
And I understand, and I think, I think you mean well, and I feel bad for all of us, so.
Yeah, it was a missed opportunity for all, for the city. That's the point.
And if I offend you and your group, I apologize to you all. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Malo.